The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, (920) 967-3608, contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.
Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassia Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have a roll, please.
Alderman Repella.
I'm here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Isenak.
Here.
Alderman Sevigny.
Here.
Alderman Hammond.
Here.
Alderman Lewis.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grady.
Here.
Alderman Ted Grady.
Here.
All are present.
You'll have to turn it on. I don't think anyone started them.
I did.
Oh. Nothing.
Dead battery or something.
The first item on the jet of this evening is the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. This time, I'd like for us to receive the Minutes A through J and Communications K through N.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion carries. Item F is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening?
Thank you. I think I mentioned this during budget time. For a few years now, I've asked for money allocated toward this. Good evening, Sandra DeBil Taylor, 545 Broad Street. Later this evening, you'll be going into closed session. There are three developer agreements that are looking to be amended. I was hoping that some of these developers would be present tonight to kind of give their story and explain it to the council rather than just reading a memo from Community Development. One is Lake Park Heights, one is Woodland Lake cottages, and of course, we have the Seventh Amendment to the BRIN. I'll just tell you flat out, when the public becomes aware of the BRIN project being delayed again, social media that I don't even pay attention to is going to explode. And I guess I question, these are all kind of coming at the 11th hour. I think the BRIN, they were supposed to be finally complete December 31st. I do recall, back in July, I forwarded to members of the council a question because I noticed in the post-press an illegal ad for litigation between CR Structures versus Vision Architecture, and there were two more. And I was questioning at that time, is this going to impact the BRIN? For years, we've heard the excuse with COVID, supply chain issues. Just a little history lesson, back in 1930, the height of the Great Depression, millions of people out to work. The Empire State Building, did you ever hear of it? 102 stories, built in 13 months. They were averaging four and a half stories a week. We can't get four and a half stories in four years. So, I know that you will most likely pass all of these and extend them because it's like too big to fail. What are we going to do now? But at some point, we need to start putting into our agreements either liquidated damages for each day of delay, that happens with construction contracts all the time, or for these where they have a developer incentive, start reducing that incentive that we have obligated to pay them. There's got to be something that's going to get these projects done. Nina, downtown Nina, had a major project built during the same timeframe, and it's done and it's occupied. So, it's just very frustrating. It's like we get so excited about new development coming to town that we don't read the fine print and we're not following up on what is best for the taxpayer. Excuse me. And then, secondly, also on the agenda tonight are revisions again. Every year, they revise the Strong Neighborhoods program. Again, concept is great, execution not so much. I have been a critic of this program because of the way it's been run. And again, every year, they keep trying to make it easier for staff to manage, not that it's better for the community or better for the taxpayer. Manassia, there is no other community that is this liberal in giving out grant money, huge amounts of grant money. Most are contingent upon their economic conditions, their wages, their... We have a lot of conflicting things in here. The good news and bad news, the first page talks about their goal when this was first developed, to increase the property value in the city from 118.4 to 120 by 2025. Well, according to the revised Appendix A, we've already met that. According to this, the current home value, median home value, is 147. So, as far as I'm concerned, okay, we're done. We accomplished a goal. Let's end this project. This is taxpayer dollars that should have went back to the city. But the bad news is, the second goal was to see a downward trend in property value survey violations. Well, that's definitely not happening. Another goal, return an average of two historically single-family homes that were converted to multifamily homes back to single-family homes. We're in the third year, and we've yet to do any of those projects. We have yet to obtain any blighted property to raise and rehab and build new. We've picked up some properties from Winnebago County vacant lots, but we haven't gone after any blighted properties. There's a few other things in here. With the most recent revisions, they now want to include single or detached garages, as long as it's part of a major renovation, including roofing. So, if somebody puts on a new roof, hey, we'll pay for a new garage. And I think the real kicker with this program, the council, first of all, Community Development needs to start reporting to the council a summary of what's going on. The Housing Authority... Let me back up. Community Development has the authority to grant the curb appeal without anyone knowing who it's going to. The Housing Authority doesn't even control it. It's strictly that department. The Housing Authority oversees the major renovation projects. The council, at a minimum, should be getting a listing of what's going on and what's being The problem that I have, the biggest one, is we have this whole rule of lists and do's and don'ts, and what's eligible and what's not, and the under-eligible projects, the last item. Other projects may be eligible for reimbursement upon approval by the Community Development Director. So, throw out all the rules, Sam's in charge. We need some oversight. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful holiday and Happy New Year.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment this evening?
Eli Wickman, 710th Street. So, I know paperwork has been turned in. We're about to enter presumably a contentious mayoral race. I have a humble plea that we just keep it civil, that it doesn't enter... I know we could get into grandstanding, especially in this room with cameras and everything. Not necessarily the time nor the place. I hope that we just keep it civil to each other, respectful. That is my hope for 2024, and that we just kind of just be nice about it, just to everyone. It's going to be messy, and we get enough of that on a national level. I hope in the City of Manassia, we can keep it friendly. That's all I got.
Hi, my name is Bethany Ginkler. I live at 210 Water Street, and I just wanted to come up here and thank our Community Development Director for taking action to have the shipping container next to my home removed. It was the best Christmas present anyone could ask for to look out my window last week and actually have somewhat of a view rather than looking at that rusty container. And so, I'm very grateful to both Community Development and also to you all on the Common Council, particularly Alderman Nichols and Alderman Sevigny, for going out of your way to reach out to me during some of the stressful issues I've been having in my neighborhood, even though I think there are a lot of improvements that still need to be made. Just having alderpeople that are willing to reach out and express a little bit of empathy for a difficult situation goes incredibly far regardless of whether you can do anything about that situation or not. And so, I would just like to thank you for that. I also just wanted to say thanks for our police department as well, our police chief, and I was able to meet with a lieutenant as well, have been really great with helping with some of the issues. So, I'm just... I just cannot express my gratitude for the council's help with everything and the city's help. Lastly, I just wanted to mention that I am so grateful that we have our Nina Manassia Santa float, that I'm sure we all have our stories of how exciting it is even as an adult to see it go past your house for the first time, but it was just really great this year to see our neighbors come out, and so many people were just waiting for that, and it really helped kind of bring our neighborhood closer together. So, thank you all, appreciate your work, and hope you all have a wonderful holiday.
Is there anyone else this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. The mic is working. So, at this time, I'd like to take these individually and first start off with the approval of the Common Council Minutes of 12, 4, 23.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion?
The clerk did indicate there was a minor change in the... So, that's noted.
So, the... There's a motion to approve the Minutes as amended. The amendment was just to include the motion carried on roll call vote 80. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
There any opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. Item 2 is the Administration Committee Recommendations. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the election inspectors for the City of Manassia for the 2024 through 25 election term as recommended by the Administration Committee.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please. I think that Randys and Toms were not turned on.
Don't just push that, Randy. Push your mic button. And let the Wi-Fi catch it.
Yours is doing anything, Tom?
I'll try to vote, Randy.
Motion carries 80.
Item 3 is the Board of Public Works Recommendations. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. The Board of Public Works is recommending a change order to Summers Construction Company Incorporated. This is street construction that's part of the Warsaw Street project. That amount is a subtraction of $1,994.35. This is change order number one.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please. I think that Randys and Toms were not turned on.
Push your mic button. And let the Wi-Fi catch it.
Yours is doing anything, Tom?
I'll try to vote, Randy.
Item 3 is the Board of Public Works Recommendations. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. The Board of Public Works is recommending a change order to Summers Construction Company Incorporated. This is street construction that's part of the Warsaw Street project. That amount is a subtraction of $1,994.35. This is change order number one.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please. Do we have a motion for item 4? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, the Board of Public Works is now recommending a payment to Summers Construction Company for the street construction of Warsaw Street for $2,000. This is payment number three, any final.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries 80.
Do we have a motion for item 5?
A pavement to Farner Asphalt Sealers LLC 2023-04, asphaltic, concrete pavement, crack ceiling for various city streets at a price of $58,125. This is payment number one and the final payment.
There's a motion by Alderman Repella, second by Alderman Sevigny. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries 80.
There's a motion for item 6. Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, another recommendation for a payment to Vinton Construction from the Board of Public Works. This is the 2023-06. This is for the Jefferson Park Playground. This amount is $169,428.94. This will be the first payment.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Tom Grady. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries 80.
Do we have a motion for item 7? Alderman Sevigny.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a little something different that is being tried and recommended by the Board of Public Works, that is to enter into a Digger's Hotline Location Agreement with Laser Utility Locating LLC commencing January 3rd of next year, 2024, for a term of five years.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries 80.
Item 8 is a recommendation by the Personnel Committee. Motion by Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to first thank the department heads and the city attorney and HR for a lot of time and hours spent on this, cleaning it up. So, with that, we did talk about it in the meeting a couple weeks ago. So, carry forward for the motion to the updates to the City of Manassia Employee Handbook as recommended by staff, as reflected in the enclosed redlined version effective beginning 1/1/24.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Nichols. Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries 80.
Do we have a motion for item 9? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I'd like to give kudos to the Health Department for the work on this, and especially Todd Drew. Make the motion for the updates to the City of Manassia Safety Manual as recommended by staff and as reflected in the endorsed redlined version, following this memorandum effective beginning 1/1/24.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Nichols. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries 80.
Item 10, Alderman Grady.
Thank you. At this time, make the motion for the addition of a full-time benefited position of Park Technician 1 contingent upon approval of 40% of the total annual cost of all wages and benefits funding the position from the Manassia Joint School District.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Nichols. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries 80.
There's a motion for item 11. Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. This time, I'd like to make the motion for the full-time benefited position of the Senior Activity Coordinator with duties split between the Senior Center at 70% and the Park and Rec Department at 30% beginning the 1st of 2024.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Nichols. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries 80.
Do we have a motion for item 12, the recommendation of the Plan Commission? Alderman Grady.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to bring forward for the approval of the Certified Survey Map as presented consolidating 800 Roosevelt Street, Parcel 500863-00 and Parcel 50086400.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Isenak?
Yep.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries 80.
Item I is Action Items. The first item is the Accounts Payable and Payroll. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve Accounts Payable and Payroll for the term of December 1st through December 14th, 2023 in the amount of $1,156,856.56.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Hammond. Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please. So, items 2, 3, and 4 are listed both under Action Items and under Closed Session. We'll start out with a description of each of them, and if someone does want to go into closed session, we'll recess out of open session and do that at the end.
Thank you, Mayor. And certainly, to kind of lead off that, it is not staff's intent that we would need to go to, but if there was issues, concerns that we would like to confer with the city attorney or negotiation aspects, we could certainly do that. So, it is an option, but it is not necessarily needed to go into closed session. So, item 2 on under Action Items, the First Amendment to the Development Agreement by and between the City of Manassia and Manassia Real Estate. So, this is in regards to the first additional Lake Park Heights. So, this subdivision development agreement was approved back in April of 2022 to create 31 new single-family lots out in this area, kind of around the Hidden Pond Park. Part of that, we did offer our deferred assessment policy. So, basically, the developer would take out the... Put in the infrastructure, and we would reimburse, and we would basically hold that debt until such a time that the lots were paid or upon an agreed-upon time. So, at this... Through this development agreement, they were to pay one in 2022, pay back one lot in 2022, and six lots each year after, starting in 2023. So, at this time, they have only paid back one lot for the 2022 year, and they did request basically we pushed all of those lot payments out a full year. Staff did have lots of conversations internally with the mayor, the city attorney, as well as Director Sassen regarding the financing of that. But because basically, when we have these deferred loans, the city is taking on that debt, and we do have loan payments ourselves. So, we look at that revenue as making ourselves whole. So, with that, staff did have some conversations with them and basically looked to push them to at least pay three lots by the end of the year, and then over the next several years, kind of make up those payments. So, with that, staff does recommend the Common Council approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Manassia and Manassia Real Estate LLC as it relates to the first addition to Lake Park Heights.
Does anyone have questions? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you, Mayor. One question. According to the memo, and I think according to what you just said, that the developer will pay three lots in 2023, so by the end of this year, still.
Correct.
And then, spread the remaining three out through the rest of the development agreement.
Correct.
Okay.
And I did... Alderman Nichols actually pointed out to me earlier today, there were a few grammatical errors as we were kind of starting with the template. There is Atkins is noted just above the signature line, and then within kind of the notary sections, Atkins is noted one more time, and then the former city clerk. So, do apologize for those, but those would be grammatical if this is approved, and we would address those before signature.
Thank you. With that, I move for the approval of the First Amendment to the Development Agreement by and between the City of Manassia and Manassia Real Estate LLC for the first addition to Lake Park Heights.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Discussion? Alderman Repella. Did you have something else?
Sure. I would just... I'll add one more thing.
Sorry, Randy.
The amendment still requires that the... All the deferments be paid back in the same timeframe as the original agreement specified. Correct, Director Schrader?
Correct. So, we would not push off that end date.
Thank you.
Alderman Repella.
Thank you, Mayor. That kind of goes along with my question, Sam, as far as we're giving him a little break this time by giving him... By having him only pay for three extras. But he can't... Are you going to allow him or come back? I guess we would allow him to come back again next year and say, it's really not working. Can I defer it a little bit longer? Or is this is one and only deferral?
That would be at the council's discretion. Basically, staff does look at a lot of different alternatives. We have a lot of different conversations with them privately, spend a lot of hours doing that. One of the things we did specifically with this one is we knew of another developer that was looking at acquiring lots. So, we had lots of conversations with that developer, trying to stitch those two together to potentially speed up some process and development here. They are still in discussion, but again, with some... They are still in discussion, but again, sometimes we are at the hands of the developer.
I mean, I know we want this development to succeed, and I think he was planning on having, am I right, 60 or 90 lots, right, Sam, by the time he was done?
So this one is the first addition, so this is just 31 lots. So that would be the next, the next development agreement.
Okay. All right. Got it. Thank you very much.
Alderman Sevanek.
The communication that you gave us just before the staff recommendation, could you explain those two paragraphs before the, before those, or after those numbers? Where it says, while it is always the city's intent to work with developers, the city also has loan payments due starting, you know, so we have our own personal loan payments coming due.
Correct, yeah. So again, with that deferred assessment, basically, we hold that debt. So we do have loan payments starting January 31, 2024, similar to what we have with all these development agreements. We have, again, talked internally a lot with Director Sassman, as well as Attorney Struve and the mayor regarding this. There are two other subdivisions that we are currently working on that are ahead of schedule. So that does assist in basically our debt financing there. So, and then basically Jennifer's working with some other things to make sure that how our books look year to year at the end of the year continue to be very positive.
The part there that bothers me is that first paragraph that says, developer who has, has, was, and able to pay back three lots in 2003, this is the part I have problems with, and then catch up on the remaining lots in subsequent years. Well, subsequent years could be anything.
If it's not specific. That's just a summary. So if you look ahead at that graph, we have basically the one lot in '22, three lots in '23, and then seven, 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 and six.
Okay. So that is, that line represents that upper part, then, you're saying?
Yep, and that is attached in Exhibit D, amended payment schedule with that developer.
All right. And then can you explain the following paragraph?
Certainly. So basically, a big question is why would we do this? So again, looking at kind of the housing market, these homes that are being built within here, 31 lots, we're looking at an additional $12 to $15 million of new valuation within this. Estimating the annual revenue just for the city portion is roughly $100,000 to $135,000 upon completion. So again, we are trying to spur that additional economic development to continuously increase our tax base, our housing stock, as well as our population to kind of continue to grow in an economic fashion.
So then, in other words, if this agreement is agreed to and they follow through without coming in and asking for another amendment, we're hoping to see additional revenues for the city in that timeframe between $100,000 and $135,000 and...
Correct.
And that's based on $12 to $15 million?
Correct.
And that's kind of a big gap.
Well, again, so $12 to $15 million is the assessed value. So if you take our current tax rate, our mil rate, times a buy that, that's what that comes out to.
So the $100,000 would be based on the $12,000, and the $135,000 would be based on the $15,000?
Roughly, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that that's clear.
I think the other thing that Director Schrader did mention was that these are minimum numbers. If they sell additional lots, they would pay up those special assessments at the time of the sale, even if it wasn't, even if it was more than what we had agreed to here. And they'd pay those things up early. Any other questions for anyone? Seeing no other questions, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
I'm so sorry. Can I restart?
It doesn't work, apparently. Oh, you'd have to do it over.
I'm so sorry. No. Motion carries eight zero.
So item 3 is the Second Amendment to Development Agreement between Atkins and the City of Manasha. Would you want to go through this one as well?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. So this is the subdivision that Alderman Repella had just brought up recently. So again, back in 2022, the City of Manasha approved a development agreement with Atkins Development LLC, which included the additional development of roughly 79, 80 lots on our, kind of our east side, north of Highway 10, and then east of Kernan. So there was 19 lots that were already platted, referred to as the third addition of Woodland Hills. That was developed by Mike Haggins. This developer kind of came in, purchased those, part of this development agreement, purchased those lots from Mr. Haggins, and kind of wrapped them into what we refer to as the Woodland Lakes cottages. So this development agreement, obviously, a lot more infrastructure that would have had to go into it. We had basically agreed to defer up to $3.651 million within infrastructure costs. And again, that deferment, we are holding that, we are holding that debt for an agreed-upon time, and then paid that back upon lot sale or a minimum number of lots per year. So initially, this development agreement does state that basically they are to construct a minimum of eight homes within the development property by the end of the year and pay back not less than eight lots by the end of the year. So at this current time, they have constructed roughly 14 new homes. Unfortunately, with that, they developed more within the third addition of Woodland Hills, which already has the deferred assessment completely paid back. So they do have several homes that are already under construction. We will already start to see kind of the tax revenue on that. But at this time, they only have one of the eight lots paid back in 2023 with a second that is planned. Basically, the financing is just being proved, but they are anticipating it to close before the end of the year with the bank. So basically, they have two lots of the eight kind of paid back. Similar to the other development agreement, they did ask for some relaxation with that to push these payments all the way off. They do have four existing spec houses that are completed, they're under construction or completed, and marketing for sale within the third addition of Woodland Hills. Again, because that, that third addition has already paid its deferred assessment back upon the sale of those, currently, we would not see any revenue coming in. So similarly, staff has many conversations with the mayor, Attorney Struve, as well as the Finance Director Sassman, and basically discussed alternatives, ways that we could move forward with a, an agreeable development agreement that continued to move the city forward, continued to work with them, as well as did not completely halt or stop development. That is, one of the hard things here is if we came down with a heavy hand, we're not sure where that would, where that would land with additional development. So basically, as part of this, this development agreement, as kind of shown the Second Amendment, and then kind of outlined within Exhibit G, the estimated minimum payment schedule, they are looking at paying back basically the two lots in 2023, and then making supplementary payments for the 2023 payments to basically make up the additional six missed lots by paying upon the lots that are already constructed in the third addition. So basically, those lots, again, once they're sold, they would normally not pay any deferred assessment, but basically to get caught back up much quicker, we're looking at, these houses are already complete, can we tap into that market in those funds and to kind of get us caught back up? So that is kind of the basis of this development agreement. There are some other minor things within the development agreement. The infrastructure on the lower half is not completed quite yet. I could let Deputy Director Gordon kind of touch base on that a little bit more, but basically, the underground utilities are in, the soil over top of those, somewhat to the rough grade is completed, and they're just waiting for that to settle to bring in the gravel next year to kind of continue that process. So they are looking at pushing that back off to June 20, June 15th of 2024. Paragraph 3 there, basically, in construction or in consideration with the City of Manasha, we would look at bidding and completing the installation of two inches of asphalt that is kind of necessary for these streets. We would withhold $250,000 to cover that cost. We have had internal discussions. That should be more than enough to kind of cover that. So again, kind of holding that cost. It is something that has not been written into development agreements before, but it has been, it has been accomplished, if you will. In the past, basically, the idea with that is because the city is doing so much street work, we can actually save on that unit cost and ultimately save on the cost to the City of Manasha taxpayers as well as the deferment that is owed. Paragraph 4 there basically kind of rewrites that into looking similar to Exhibit G, where basically they would owe not less than two lots in 2023 and not less than a total payment of $369,000 per year. So the reason we kind of took out the minimum eight lots per year and just added that dollar amount, so that dollar amount is what our minimum loan is. We're going to try to work with them to kind of get caught back up even faster. So typically, I think they would owe $46,000 per lot sale. We're going to work with them to try and increase the number that they are paying per lot, so we can kind of get caught up a little quicker on the front end, and they feel like that will work better. So, and then basically, the other portion, again, stays the same. Interest on any outstanding balance commencing in year 2028 shall be basically accrue interest at the deferred assessment loan plus 1%. So again, this is a little bit higher, I think it's noted in Exhibit G, so we had the loan rate of 4.58. So at that point, there would be a 1% interest tapped onto that, and they would be basically required to pay on that as well, which is another reason, an incentive for them to continue to try to get these lots done sooner than later, as well as, again, continue to pay down that debt quicker on the earlier lots. So again, if they owe $46,000 per lot and they want to pay $55,000 per lot, that takes that debt down, so there's less interest to be paid on the back end. Section 4.6, this is again, kind of touching on that supplementary payment that we kind of talked about. So the four spec houses in the third addition to basically pay almost $58,000 per those four, each one of those lots towards, towards the 2023 deferment, as well as one additional lot that's under construction within the new area. Article 6 and paragraph, 6 and 7, basically insert or any subsequent amendment. So this is when we would complete the final street. It states five years within the agreement. And then the second one is when we would take ownership of the stormwater ponds and the outlots. So five years within the agreement obviously is much different than if we continue to amend this. So basically, adding in subsequent amendments slightly pushes our obligation off in that regard. Section, paragraph 8 and 9 are just updating the email addresses, contact information, and paragraph 10 basically is just notes that everything else will remain the same.
Over Sevanek.
I can't find Article 6. So Article 6 would be in the original development agreement. Page 486 of the overall packet, page 4 of the original development agreement. Okay. So mostly what we're doing would be in Exhibit G.
Exhibit G is, is kind of that overall estimate summary of what it is we're looking at, yes.
And if you had to put it in a nutshell, you know, the most abbreviated way, is this postponing a little bit of the deferred assessment, or are we right?
So this, at the end of this year, they owe on eight. They will have paid, if this is approved as written, they will pay on two.
Yep.
And then they will pay an additional five lots upon the sale of, and those lots would go into those. But the five lots would make up the total amount that is due, so that we've increased those payments to still make up a full payment of eight.
And then the interest that you talked about, like in year 2028, is that 1%? I mean, I don't, you were saying...
No, that's 5.58%. So our loan is at 4.58, so it's 1% above that.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This was, is, one of the more complex development agreements we've ever had in my time here on the council, and I have had conversations with Director Schrader today and Director Sassman, and I am satisfied with Exhibit G, which makes sure that we are recouping the appropriate deferred assessment amounts in order to make the loan payment that comes My other big question has to do with the fact that the infrastructure that the developer was to install has not yet been completed, and those dates, according to this, those dates are extended out until June, middle June of 2024. And so I also had a conversation with Deputy Director Gordon about that today. So could Deputy Director Gordon just fill us in on how far along things actually are and when you anticipate the completion of that?
Yeah. So all of the utility pipes have been put in, the sanitary, the water and the storm sewer are installed. The lower half of this subdivision, the southern half of this subdivision, needed a fair amount of fill brought in to build up the road, three to four feet roughly. So they had a place that fill prior to being able to construct the storm sewer. So part of the Brin project, we supplied or brought fill out there. They then, this summer, when conditions were dry, placed the fill, and then the utility contractor came in this fall and installed the storm sewer. The roads are more or less constructed roughly to grade. Basically, right now, the fall was kind of wet, so we're trying to let the subgrade dry out before we go in there and try to start putting stone on. I don't feel comfortable going in and putting the gravel base in. Once frost is in the ground, it would support the trucks and things, but if there are soft areas, we won't be able to tell, we won't identify those until in the spring and the gravel's already in. I prefer to find that before we start placing the gravel. So that's where the, the June date comes in on that.
But essentially, all of the pipes underground are installed and finished.
I would say right now, the, the southern half of the subdivision is, I would say, 95% complete. The only thing that needs to be put in is the gravel base.
Okay. Thank you for that. I'm happy to hear that it's that far along.
Any other discussion? Alderman Repella?
No, that's okay.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. I realize we don't have a motion yet.
We do not.
Move to approve the Second Amendment to the Development Agreement by and between the City of Manasha and Atkins Development Group LLC for the Wood Lake, Woodland Lakes cottages Project.
So motion and a second by Alderman Repella. Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, then, please.
I do have a question.
Okay.
Because this is the first basically amendment to this, to our agreement, I don't want it to be to be so comfortable to continue to have these amendment agreements coming back and forth, back and forth because of market conditions or whatever. There's a reason why we have these and I just, you know, we have one coming up. And that one just, you know, has been a quandary. I mean, it's just created, it's, it went from being one thing to another thing. It's hard to put in words without offending anything or anyone, but I don't want this to become something that's a normal process. So hopefully somehow that is placed in the minutes or is understood by the developer.
I have one thing too, Mayor. Go ahead. Okay. Sam, I know that he's, the, the challenge of selling the lots and the houses have been difficult the last few years. This, and I think this is what Stan was getting to, and I guess I'm following suit. If he has difficulty, I think eight houses is his next payment, right? For that, for the second amendment? Is it eight houses that he's expected to pay for?
It, it's amended to just a dollar amount, but yes, it would come out to the same eight lots that.
Okay. Now suppose he's only, suppose he has a, I do have people who I know that live out there, they enjoy where they live out there. But suppose he only does like three or four houses, so we're still going to put him on the hook for, you said eight, so you're going to be paying for eight? Or does he come back for another one of these agreements? I guess that's what Stan was mentioning.
If, if this second amendment doesn't get approved, technically, the development agreement stays and he's subject to pay eight this year.
Okay.
So again, we can, we can stress to them, again, similar to we always do, but at the same token, anybody can ask for every, anything.
Okay. So we could come back, there could be another amendment next year if he doesn't do the eight? Correct. Okay.
We're gonna, yeah, try everything we can to help him market these sites that we don't have that, but.
Okay. Understood.
Can never say never.
I want the program to succeed. So thank you.
And I noticed that Alderman Nichols didn't read the condition on there. Was that implied or was that specifically that you did not want to include that?
No, I'm on the wrong one. Thank you. I was just reading from the agenda, so pardon me. Yes, I do want that condition.
Okay.
And.
Did you find, I can read it for you.
I have it now. So what I said, approve the second amendment to the development agreement by and between the city of Manassia and Atkins Development Group LLC. As it relates to the Woodland Lakes cottages development with a condition that an updated pro forma and credit letter is developed and provided to the city finance director and community development director for review.
Okay. So I was just checking.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay, one more. Item four is the seventh agreement to the Bryn project. Director Schrader, did you want to explain this one as well?
Certainly. So as you can all see down Main Street, the Bryn development is making substantial progress. Certainly, we've, we've all been here where we've discussed the delays that have happened with this project. As Public Comment had noted earlier, there is, there is some litigation that I will not get into in that regards, and I'm sure at some point in the future, however that shakes out would make some additional sense as to where some of these delays are coming from. But basically, the intent of this, this amendment is just to, to push that final completion date off from December 31st, 2023 to June 30th of 2024. Everything that I'm being told is, it is hopeful for much sooner than that. We, we did just basically add a little bit of a buffer into that. So the date that is inserted there is basically a staff date following the date that was requested by the developer. They do have many of the, the internal units on the southern building, so obviously the exterior is still being completed, but just so everyone kind of is well aware, you know, over a month ago, they were putting finishes, cabinetry, kitchens into the units on the, in the southern unit. And I know have kind of moved on to that in the northern unit as well. So they are making substantial progress, have really pulled everybody off. They actually did just pour the, the parking lot in concrete with the curb and gutter, I think like two weeks ago. So that is, is in, they are working on, I think, the sidewalk installation, hopefully, hopefully soon as well.
Alderman Sonek?
Thank you, Mayor. Despite the comments about social media and even some of the things that Sam had just noted, the public isn't aware of a lot of things. And we just got to touch down, in my opinion, with this project regardless. And there's only one second left on the clock and we're just going to let it run out. So basically, at this time, the common council is going, I'm going to recommend that the common council approve the seventh amendment to the land purchase and development agreement between the city of Manassia and Bryn LLC as it relates to the Bryn project at One Main Street here in Manassia.
There's a motion by Alderman Sonek and a second by Alderman Nichols. Any further discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just curious if they would be able to rent apartments while work is being completed on the commercial portion of the project.
That, there was some discussion with that. There, there are options to, to get a temporary occupancy. That does get a little bit messy and they have to kind of weigh those options, whether or not they want to just wait a couple of months to complete the whole thing. I think the thought process is still in their heads because the, obviously, the, there is a fire separation wall within the, the catwalk that's connecting the two buildings. So they could, in theory, if they finish the first building on the southern side, they could kind of block that off and potentially open that up. The other downfall is the underground parking is all connected and obviously the surface parking lot of kind of getting construction workers in and out there. So it is something that I, I know I personally have had conversations with the developer and I think they're weighing back and forth as well.
Thank you.
Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. Sam, do you have any information as far as have they, have, do they have any renters lined up already or is, what's the status of also of the, the first level as far as for the businesses, that section? Any, any progress, progress on any of that things?
I do not believe they've started pre-leasing any of the residential units. I will say, again, a lot of the other residential units that are coming to market are still filling up fairly well. Certainly a few years ago, they, they filled up much, much quicker, but they are still, still filling up pretty well. As far as the commercial space, I, I have had several conversations with their developer that they were working with several different tenant possibilities. I think they do have a commercial realtor kind of already under contract and are, and are working towards that. I think a lot of it is likely going to come down to, to timing and it's still a very scary time to open a new business, so we'll see.
Okay. And, I mean, I'm just looking at the, the Annap building and they're supposed, they were supposed to have a, or hoping to have a flower shop or a coffee shop and that's still vacant and so that kind of goes along with your, it's very difficult to start a new business.
That's actually Harbor Lot 130 Main Street and that is hopefully imminent.
What about the one on Annap Street then? They had that long Oak Street or where our, our new street was going to be put in.
They're still working on leasing that up as well.
Understood. Okay. Thank you very much.
Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item five is the Strong Neighborhoods Housing Program updates. I don't know if you would like.
Certainly. I think somebody said last week they, they missed my voice, so. Got, got it all organized today. All right. So basically, the Strong Neighborhoods program, again, each year we kind of evaluate the program guidelines. And I will say, each year, this program continues to be tremendous as far as the, the input, the, the drive from different, different residents or the, kind of the bleed of the neighborhood. I do have conversations with our principal planner, Matt Larson, about pulling together kind of that heat map so you guys can kind of see the general area. We have done that annually, just kind of with some other things going on. I apologize that that's not included today, but that is being worked on and hopefully in sometime in January, we can kind of share that with that. We did, however, were able to kind of pull together some of the numbers. So this year, we had nine major renovations programs approved totaling roughly $86,000 in funding and triggering kind of a total project value of 252,000. We also approved 20 curb appeal projects, so again totaling roughly $89,000 and triggering a total project value of 272,000. So the, the proposed red lines, as they are drafted, were taken last week to our housing authority. They did review these as well as make a recommendation to the common council for approval. And those changes are summarized in the memo, basically clarifying that projects associated with Habitat Rock to Block would not be eligible for the major renovation program. So there was some conversations early on with the creation of this program not to basically allow any projects that Habitat for Humanity is doing to be eligible for this, this program. But as we continue to kind of build, build this process of how we are implementing this, as well as looking at the good that Habitat does do for the community, we, we do want to, we don't want to be a hindrance to, to that development either. So basically, what we had looked at is a major renovation program, there's a longer application process, it has to go to the housing authority, and then there's a lot of backend paperwork in order to file those, those forgivable loans and that sort of thing. So basically, taking that out of the picture, that we could still allow curb appeal projects with, with Habitat Rock to Block or any other singular Habitat projects with, with any project. The second one, to allow detached garages to be eligible for, for the major renovation program if they are part of a comprehensive project. So that is not saying if you build a roof, put a new roof on your principal structure, you get to build a new detached garage. What that is saying is if you put a new roof on your principal structure and you're also going to replace the roof on your detached garage, you, you would be eligible. Based upon how the current program is written, those types of projects have been taken out. And what we've seen is somebody that wants to replace the windows of both their house and their garage or siding on their house and the garage, they, they find out that the detached garage isn't eligible and then they only do the principal structure. So we want to, again, continue to encourage that investment and that curb appeal throughout the community. And this simple change, we, we do believe is still meeting that intent and as well as pushing that investment of the private side. Number three is the W-9 form that would be required. So this, we previously did allow basically payments directly to the applicant or the resident. We have since changed that a few years ago to basically say that payments need to be to a professional contractor. So with that, we no longer really need the W-9 form from the resident. It's just another paperwork and honestly, private information that, that I don't want to keep track of and I don't want to get out with basically our, our storage and our servers. And then we, as noted earlier, we did update Appendix A just to kind of give a brief snap of, of where we are currently.
Thank you, Mayor. So back to the garage situation and interpretation as far as comprehensive. I mean, that's kind of going to have to be a decision between you or the committee kind of deciding what actually is comprehensive. It's not really defined. That's the only reason I have a little struggle with it, and I mean very little. I think garages are just as important as the structure themselves. In fact, when I watch these HGTV shows or whatever and they're showing the house, they never show the garage. And I think garages are important also.
So a few years ago, if I can address that, we did add this terminology of comprehensive project. So what was happening was a lot of people were pulling together tiny little projects to meet that minimum value and it wasn't actually making an impact on, on the home value or the neighborhood. So we added comprehensive project in there. And page six of this program basically does state, all, all major renovation loans must be tied to a comprehensive project. A comprehensive project is a project that has one area of the home or a singular goal of renovation. For example, kitchen remodel, home addition would be examples of the comprehensive projects that, projects that cover many areas of the home or do not achieve a singular home renovation goal shall not be allowed. So we do kind of have that defined, maybe not in the greatest terminology, but somewhat guidance to that regards, as well as there is that element of, of kind of staff looking at this and then the housing authority kind of reviewing this as well.
Okay. And also, I'm just going to kind of go with my gut here, my, this is just my feeling. And I think it's, what most of us believe up here is that I'm more interested in fixing a house than renovating a house, if that makes sense. I don't like the idea that we're putting in new kitchens and updating, what did you just say before, a home addition. My whole thought behind being part of the Strong Neighborhoods program was to help individuals with upkeep on their home, usually for those that wanted to do it but made it a little unattainable because they had a hard time maybe paying for it completely. And this was supposed to give you the shot in the arm. And I don't want this program turning into home renovations as far as basement remodelings and kitchen updates and those kind of things. I like the idea of new roofs, new windows, siding, those kind of things, porches, because to me, that's really, when we put this together, is what we were really looking at and not a lot of those other things.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to start by thanking Director Schrader and City Planner Larson for the work that you both put into it. I know we've had some really well spirited conversations on the housing authority and I think everyone's hearts are in the right place to try to make adjustments and make the biggest splash, the biggest impact for folks to be able to do the necessary upkeep to improve housens, excuse me, to improve the housing stock and things of that nature. So with that being said, I would like to make a motion to approve the Strong Neighborhood Housing Program updates and amendments as provided in our packet and approved by the housing authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
Some motion and a second by Alderman Ted Grady? Further discussion? Alderman Repella?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, I appreciate Sam's work. I guess this is kind of what, going off what Austin had to say, but I appreciate Sam's work and trying to clean up Manassia and provide, provide better housing. I understand what Alderman Sonek is mentioning too, as far as some of these older homes, the outsides need more repair and sometimes some of these. the outsides need more repair, and sometimes some of these somewhat, I want to say newer homes, they're, they're fixing up their bathrooms inside and some of that interior stuff that we really don't see. And I know you have a curb appeal, a curb appeal program as well, but I guess when we started the program, we were more concerned with fixing up the outside of the house and making it look presentable and inviting when you drive by, and we still got a ways to go as far as, I guess, limiting, limiting the, the improvements of some of these houses to focus on some of these other houses that really need some outside improvements. And I, and I have talked with you many times, they, they need to have a down payment, or they have to have their original cash money to begin with. Some have that, and some have difficulty even finding out about this program. So, it's more of word out of, word, word of the mouth program that some of these houses are getting repaired, so, but they're getting repaired, so. Thank you, Sam, that's all I got.
There's a motion and a second, I don't see any further discussion. If we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item L is appointments. We have three of them tonight. The first is for the Committee on Aging. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move for the approval of your appointment of Bernice Kohansky to the Committee on Aging for the term through, for the term of December 18th, 2023, through February 1st, 2026. And also, your appointment of Sue Wisneski to the Committee on Aging for the term of 121823 to February 1st, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Some motion and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion carries. Item three is an appointment to the Sewage Commission. We have an appointment, Alderman Sounick?
Are you sure about this one, Mayor?
We've had a lot of discussion.
Here's why, here's why I want to take this one, because I joke around once in a while that I call him the commish, and here he is, being appointed as Commissioner. So, at this time, Mayor, I'll move for your reappointment of Cory Gordon to the Needham Manassia Sewage Commission for a term of 1124 to 123126.
Some motion and a second. All joking aside, Cory's been invaluable to us internally, knowing what's going on and understanding what some of the processes and plans that they have at the commission, so it is really good to have a staff member. I think most of the other communities have either a staff or an elected official on there as well, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed, other than you, Cory? Are you opposed? The motion carries. Item N is public comments. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Seeing no one, is there, I think the next thing is a motion to adjourn, right? Is there a motion to adjourn?
There's a motion.
Oh, never mind, I... There is one other item that wasn't on the list of just action items, so at this point, we wouldn't need, need a motion. Well, I guess we can start out, it's number four, we can start out with Director Youngworth, would you like to just share with us what this is? And why we may want to go into closed session?
Absolutely, yep. Just to give some background information on this, we have brought to the Board of Public Works, Plan Commission, and subsequently, Council for approval for the right-of-way plant, property acquisitions, and permanent limited easement required for the Racine Street project from Third to Ninth Street. So what we would need to go into closed session for is that we have been working with a real estate consultant on, kind of starting with a baseline price to negotiate, a starting point for negotiation for the temporary limited easements, permanent limited easement, and property acquisitions for this project. So, these are needed through the process because we do, do have a D, we are working under a DOT grant, so that brings forth additional requirements, and thus the reason for us having to go through this process.
Alderman Sounick?
Thank you, Mayor. This was potentially a Board of Public Works item, but because we were going in a closed session, it made more sense just to go through the council. So, at this time, I'll move that we adjourn into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, parent one, parent E and G, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session, and/or conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body, who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategies to adopt by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. This is the right-of-way acquisitions and other permanent limited easements and temporary limited easements for the Racine Street from Third Street to Ninth Street.
Is there a second?
Second.
Some motion and a second to adjourn into closed session. I see no discussion, if we could have a roll, did Alderman Nichols have to leave?
Yep.
Okay, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Motion carries seven zero.
The City of Manassia is pleased to present video recordings of city council and city committee meetings. Manassia residents and interested parties can get information about city meetings, meeting agendas, and other documents from the city website, www-manassiawi.gov. Expression of opinions regarding City of Manassia issues or about these broadcasts can be made by contacting the mayor's office, 920-967-3608, contacting their city alderman. Contact information appears on the city website, or by completing the electronic feedback form on the city website. All public portions of the meetings are recorded in entirety and are not edited.